Good evening councillors and welcome to this special council meeting. This evening and I trust that we from our offices that we're streaming live now on the on the internet by YouTube and and Facebook. Just wanted to check that that was all happening from the offices. I think that it is. I think we are streaming live now. So, welcome and thank you everyone for for joining us for this special council meeting with the agenda that has been published to the community. As is with our council meetings at the moment, the Victorian Government passed emergency measures for us to act as a council and meet virtually. So this meeting is held via Zoom. We have a number of public presentations to us this evening and the members of the community will be joining us via Zoom as well. So that is a part of the section 394 of the Osbansmans. On the Osbansmans, yes, we are live. I've had confirmation, sorry. I just had a text message to say, yes, we are live. So some of the emergency measures that were sent out from the state government. So we are able to meet and we know that with the instructions by the state government for councils to meet and special council meetings to meet, that we must all be able to see each other, we must be able to hear each other, we must be able to see each other and we must be able to be heard. So before we head into the area of apologies and leave of absence, I just would like to check that all the technology is working and councillors, as the meeting host, I have the the ability to mute and unmute everyone. So I will unmute everyone now and just check that audio. So that will unmute my ability to mute you, but you will still have to press unmute so we can hear you as well. So I've put the blanket unmute off and now you will all be able to press the button when you when you want to talk this evening through the meeting. So just a quick quick check if we could. Councillor Alan McFarlane, Deputy Mayor, if I could check you first.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I can see everyone and hopefully hear everyone.
Thanks very much. And I'll just go across my screen in no particular order. Councillor Darren, how can I see and hear you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I can see and hear everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Graham Middleness?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I can only see five councillors. Could I have some technical advice as to how I can push that up to nine?
Yep, up the top right hand corner, there's a thing called gallery view. It'll be a series of nine boxes that look like the Brady Bunch. You can press that and you'll see everyone.
And under view options?
Just in the in the area where all the the cameras are, show grid view is rather than show video.
It's on my left hand side, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, is it? Okay. Working in reverse here. But we'd like to get you that. The the Act does say as long as you can see people as they are talking, so that would be movers and and people that are speaking to it. But we'd like you to see all councillors now.
I feel very embarrassed, Mr. Mayor, but I cannot find the device you're pointing me at. What does it look like?
It it looks like it looks different on the other computers, I'm sure, but I've got it as a grid view. If you were to go into Zoom, you'd be able to at the top, right at the top, I think.
At the right at the top, I've got meeting information. That just tells me the meeting. The next one is settings.
Right. So I think probably more into the centre. If there's another councillor who might be able to help, Councillor McFarlane, on the technological side of things, I'm not on a Surface Pro.
Great. Oh, you're on a Surface Pro. Yeah, great. I think you need to just be on your screen where you can see yourself and everyone else at the moment. At the top, can you see a countdown which will be showing about forty nine seconds twenty eight, then you'll see speaker view. No, can't see it.
Can't see anything.
And no exit for you.
I've got the same same problem too, Dan. I'm just going to get the IT guys to come and get get me organised as well.
That'd be good if we can get the IT. Thanks, Councillor Law. They might be able to step you through that as well, Councillor Middleness. So that is a requirement that we do. We can see everyone.
Yeah, look, and I'm terribly embarrassed, Mr. Mayor, but I cannot find a way. I've got, for instance, a tab here called view options. It will not respond. I've got view options, Zoom, Hide Video Panel, no, nothing there, nothing there.
Graham, just run your cursor to the the picture of the councillor at the bottom and just see if a little arrow comes up.
Thanks very much.
That and it should flick you up to see all nine councillors and the other four.
Now I've got six, so I'm getting better.
Just keep hitting the arrow and it should flick you through all of them. You won't see all together, but you should be able to see all the councillors.
Mr. Mayor, I can, by flicking, I can see each councillor, so I can flick. When I hear them speak, I can flick to it. So I believe I would now comply with the Act.
I think you would, absolutely, yes. And as the speaker speaks, they they will probably come more prominent in your screen with Zoom. So that will work.
Thanks to Councillor Harriman for his technical advice.
Thank you very much, Councillor Harriman. We're working through this. Councillor Gibson, you're next on my screen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can see and hear you. It's a lot weird this week and it's not me. Although, can I ask a question while councillor Law is getting some technical help? Can I split the screen on this or no, I can't?
I'm not sure if I can answer that one for you, councillor.
Try it. You can.
You can. There you go. You press the little button.
So which button did you push?
I just picked the screen up and dragged it.
Okay.
I've still only got six pictures, but never mind.
I've got. Grabby, Gray, if you grab the side of where you can see us and your arrows will start to pop up on angles. If you start to stretch that box out, you should be able to see a few more people.
Yes, that some of you people are magical. All my problems are solved, Mr. Mayor.
We're all wizards. Thank you.
I can see everybody.
It's the joy of being remote. You don't have IT staff sitting around the corner for us. So that's great. Excellent. And councillor Gibson, did you work your split screen?
Well, not split, but it doesn't matter because I've dragged it and we're all lot large. Thank you.
That's how it sits, Sharon. One beside the other, one behind the other. Yep, you're correct.
Thank you. Moving through my screen, councillor Daryl White, you're next.
I just dropped the unmute button now, is it? It's just, oh, right there. Yep, okay.
All clear, Mr. Mayor. I can see and see in the air.
Wonderful. Thanks. Thanks very much, councillor White. Councillor Law, just in time.
Yep, been seeing here, everybody.
Excellent. I'm glad that worked. Councillor Harriman, we know we can hear you, but can we see you and hear you and can you see and hear everyone?
I can see and hear everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your IT assistance and councillor Kelly O'Callaghan.
All clear both ways. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Both ways. Thank you very much. We're also joined this evening by our CEO, Mr. P. Assenti. Steve, can you see and hear us?
Okay, Miss Samantha, thank you.
Thank you very much. And the other people within this virtual meeting are our IT staff, governance staff and general management team. So now that we've done our our IT check and I appreciate that and thank you, we'll start the meeting proper. And I'd like to start with the opening prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For the kingdom, the power and the glory are yours now and forever. Amen. Like to acknowledge that we are meeting, even though in different locations, on the land of the traditional land of the Barakalong people of the Gunai Kernai nation, and I pay my respects to their elders past and present. If there are any elders who are joining us online this evening, I'd like to acknowledge them as well and pay my respects to them as well. Item three on our agenda for the special council meeting are apologies or leaves of absence. And as we've had a bit of a roll call, we have no apologies this evening. Item four is declarations of interest. Councillors, does anyone have a declaration of interest on any of the items in this evening's meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a declaration of interest, but on the basis of transparency, one of the speakers tonight is not an immediate family member, but does have a distant married connection to a family member. So there's no declaration, but just wanted to be transparent about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, councillor O'Callaghan. Does anyone else have a declaration of interest? Thank you, councillors. We move straight to public participation time. Now, this is an opportunity where the the community can speak to us and talk about any item on the agenda for any of our council meetings that we are having down that night. The participants must register by twelve o'clock on the day of the council meeting and we've had four people participant register today to participate for our agenda this evening. And as we know, we only have one item on the agenda, so they're all speaking of the on the same thing, which is item six point one. Now, we're using the Zoom technology and the people who are speaking are waiting in the waiting room of Zoom and I'm going to let them in one by one. The first person that is going to speak to us is Andy Webb, and I see Andy is sitting in the waiting room. So I'll admit Andy and then get Andy lined up that he can see us and hear us. Andy's connecting. Hello, Andy, can you hear us? Make sure that you're not muted. Might be on on the. We can see you, Andy. We just can't hear you. Need to ensure that your connect with computer audio is on. Working now. Andy, we might get someone to to give you a ring, just as to step you through that if that's that's all right. So we'll have one of the governance officers give you a call, someone you might have spoken to this afternoon when you're registering or just before twelve o'clock today. If that that'll help. Just doesn't seem to be any audio there. So while Andy's working that out, with your indulgence, councillors, we might see if we can move across to the next speaker, which is John Lanestaff, who's a committee member for the Terrebonne Railway Reserve Conservation Committee. They're a special committee. I'll just take John as an admit into the meeting while Andy still sorts his out. He'll hopefully come back to Andy. Andy is connecting his audio now. Hello, John.
How are you? Yeah, good, thank you.
Good to see you and your your audio and and video are working. You can see us?
Yes, I can tell you it's all fine, thank you.
Excellent. So, John, thanks very much for for coming to the special council meeting to make a presentation to us. You've done this before, you've met with us before online, so you know how this works. The the presentation for tonight, we allocate three minutes to each speaker and and then councillors may ask you questions afterwards on on your presentation. So when when you're all right, we'll we can kick off.
All right, yeah, I'm ready to go. I'm just going to read out what I've got in front of me and we can we'll go from there if everybody's okay. All right. So, good evening, Mayor Clancy, councillors and others. The Terrebonne Railway Reservoir Conservation Reserve Special Committee wish bring to the council's attention the following works which will require funding in upcoming budgets plus design and planning by the council. We have a bridge called Dean's Bridge, which is built over the reservoir spillway which requires replacing as the main support timbers are rotted through and the bridge timbers are severely rotted. The bridge currently is tied by a metal bond to the spillway to stabilise the bridge. Otherwise, it's very wonky. The bridge will probably need to be closed off within the next twelve months due to safety concerns with the bridge. As councillors have decided that the spillway needs to be widened, Dean's Bridge should be carried out when the spillway widening works are carried out. The committee have not seen a copy of the reservoir report, which includes the spillway, the reservoir and the reservoir wall that Les Hilton of the council has or is preparing. I believe it has been prepared. We just haven't seen a copy of it. Okay, the next one I'll talk about is Kevin Delaney on October the nineteenth said that the council would place bollards at the east end of the South Government Road. He is waiting on council funds to carry this out as far as we're concerned. This work is required to stop the following: dumping of rubbish along the South Government Road of the reserve to prevent four-wheel drives destroying the roadway, damaging the pipe under the roadway and causing sediment to flow into the reserve. It also, depending on its location, will stop undesirables frequenting the area. We've noticed what we believe are individuals up there, maybe even conducting. Oh, yes. So it's been fairly un-nice. I can hear something now. Yep. All right. Everybody happy?
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, we're just connecting one of the other speakers. John, that that did interrupt you, but where you go.
All right, I've got you. Okay, the next one is the removal of silt from the reservoir will be required in the next four years due to the build-up of the sediment in the reservoir due to large amounts of reeds and water lilies and sediment. This will be a considerable undertaking in all aspects, i.e. detail painting, cost and installation. We think this will be a fairly big ticket item for the council. The committee is awaiting Les Hilton's report so that they can assess the impact on the reservoir for that work. The next one we have here is, now that the new assembly shed is completed, there will be need for a bus turning area to be constructed at the top end of Hickock Street and the South Government Road. The assembly shed is to be used by school and community groups to carry out education about reserves flora and fauna. These groups will be brought by buses to the shed and reserve and thus the need for the turning area. Also note that the rubbish truck will need somewhere to turn around up there as well. Okay, the next one, due to the increasing numbers of people attending reserves, the reserve in vehicles, the current car park in Hickock Street overflows at least once a week. We're getting big numbers up there. To alleviate this overflow, the committee would like to see a car park constructed at the southern end of the Hyde Park Road Extension. Repair of the road service at the end of Hyde Park Road Extension will also be required. This work should be in consultation with Delcooth Heights as they are constructing more housing units in this immediate area and Delworth, due to the road extension currently being crown land. Next, an external fence needs to be constructed around the ninety four A block where the assembly shed is currently located. The type of fence will need to be will need to provide security from motor vehicles, unwanted personnel and pest animals such as cats, dogs, foxes, rabbits. Last but not least is construct a gutter. Construction of a gutter is required to be carried out along the west side of Hickock Street between the car park start and end of the new gravel pathway to prevent water from entering the reserve and the cut reserve car park and washing away the gravel. So they're the main jobs. I've just got a little bit more to say about the the reserve if I may.
Sure, John. I don't know. I can't see a timer, so I'm not sure if you you go over, but I might assume that we've gone over a little bit, but councillor Harriman, would you like to move an extension? I can't hear you, councillor Harriman, sorry.
Quite happy to move an extension, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Middleness seconding. All those in favour? All right. So there we go. John, that's just a process thing for us. We like make sure that you get a little bit more time.
No worries. Thank you very much. Okay, just a bit of preamble now. The reserve is used by people for taking a relaxing family walk with their dog, other exercise in the forms of walking, running, jogging around the numerous paths, photography of the flora and fauna within the reserve and exploring the canyon, et cetera. The reserve assist the council in achieving its municipal public health and wellbeing plan by assisting council in maintaining a community asset that promotes enjoyment and cultivates active living within two kilometres of the town centre. Around two and a half thousand people attend the reserve on a weekly basis. These are figures that are well and truly established. We're thinking it's more like three thousand on a on a nice fine week or even in excess of that. So you can see that it gets plenty of use. Trip Advisor has the reserve as the number one tourist attraction in Terrebonne. The committee wished to work closely with the council and its officers to bring about these works to satisfy the needs of people attending the reserve. The committee and its volunteers will assist the council in carrying out any of these works that they can do. And I'd just like to say thank you for letting myself on behalf of the committee speak to you on their budget submission.
Thanks. Thanks, John. It's great. And if you just stick around for some questions.
Sure.
Councillor Harriman, I think you've indicated you'd like a bit of question of John.
Just just a couple if I could, John. Just to give the other councillors a bit of an idea, how many years have you been waiting to get the bollards in or or trying to get the bollards in on the the eastern end of South Government Road?
Yeah, that was October nineteen, two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, not I meant, how long has the committee been trying to get bollards put in?
Yeah, we've been, yeah, sorry, that was when it was when it was said that would happen. Probably for the last, well, I've been as I've been with the committee now actively for about the last four years and for every one of those four years, we've been we've been trying to do that, that's for sure, yeah.
Yep. And and can you just fill in to councillors that are not aware of the reserve, some of the issues that that causes by not having the bollards there, what it allows unwanted people to do?
Yeah, we, there's a little, there was a farm that farmer that needed to use the South Government Road to access his land and the house that was there, which is all that's gone now. The the house has been bulldozed and the the entry from that point on the South Government Road is no longer required. And people people now park in that driveway and we're quite shocked out there at times. You'll see a car go up and sit there and then you'll see two or three other cars go up and we can only assume that they're that they are doing drugs. There's been ongoing over the years, plenty of rubbish being from old playground equipment, garden clippings, you name it, it's all been dumped up up there for that time. And the other big hassle that we've had is four-wheel drives using an area where the water actually runs through the bottom of the gully into the reserve. The four-wheel drives have been using that as their, let's see if we can get bog pit and have stirred up great heap of sediment there into the reserve and also damaged the pipe which brings the water from under the roadway into the reserve.
Yep, nice. And I was just just going to ask you about the block at ninety four A. That's that's one you've just recently taken over and you're trying to develop that site, if I'm not mistaken. It's a native grass area?
Yeah, native grass area and as you say, we've just taken it over. We've only just been handed over the maintenance building that we've got there now, provided by the council through funding from the LBA, the council in ourselves, which we consider a great asset. So, yes, we're looking to develop that land of ninety four A and we need to get a fence around it to secure it. We, as of two days ago, the vandals were back up there at the very end of Dunbar Road, driving up the embankment, ripping it up in their forward drives and doing day nuts on the block. So the sooner we get a fence up there, the sooner we can stop that sort of stuff happening.
Yep. And just one more, if I may, Mr. Mayor. John, have you got a got a quote or a rough idea on the cost of actually putting the bollards in at the east end of South Government Road?
I believe that I believe the cost there was something around about eleven thousand dollars.
Yep, no worries at all.
Kevin's Kevin's quote on that one was about eleven thousand dollars.
Excellent. Thanks, John. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Harriman. Any other councillors have a question of John? Councillor Middleness, then councillor Gibson?
Now, I don't know whether it matters, Mayor, but I can't I can't I can't see councillor Middleness.
We're going to get there. I think you went to unmute.
Yeah, no worries.
Will come up on your screen. Almost there.
Bear with me, councillors.
There we are. Okay.
Now, exit to full screen, see what that happens. No, that's no help to me whatsoever. The expert councillors, if they could jump in at this point, I have, I don't know what you can see, but all I can see is myself. Councillor Harriman, what have I done?
You've now surpassed my my IT knowledge, councillor Middleness.
When I'm wondering if if you. and I pressed the little button that says grid view, which is a nine, nine square.
If you, if you go to the top of the pictures of all the councillors Graham, there's a black bar along the top, just put your cursor in there.
Yep.
And you should see nine dots like a win sign up on the top bar there somewhere.
No, however, are you all able to see me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll proceed with my question, John. Thanks, thanks for your patience, John. Look, you, you raised a number of issues, a number of, shall we say, parts of the projects that you want done. Do you have a, an idea, you've given us a, a cost estimate for the bollards, but of all the things you mentioned, are you able to put a rough price on each of those?
I would, I would only be guessing, I would only be guessing, but I would say
I guess would help us.
We don't understand, because we haven't seen Les Hilton's report, we don't understand exactly what's been proposed under that report for the works within the reserve. But to replace the spillway and to replace Dean's Bridge, I would expect you'd be looking at somewhere between sixty to a hundred thousand dollars for that job. I think, I think you'd be surprised just how much that'll run into. The bollards, as I said, about eleven thousand dollars. Removal of the salt from the reservoir. Ballpark figure, I would think, you know, we're gonna need some pretty big machinery, some trucks and all the rest of it. I would think a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, we've probably, we've probably got a fair idea around that because we do it regularly at the Kurnet Lake in Moor.
Yep, 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 good. The bus turning area, I would think if you spent fifteen to twenty thousand there for the bus turning area at the top of Hickock Street, I think probably ten thousand dollars, you know, just needs a bit more crush rock and and stuff put up there and spread out a bit in a, in a bigger area. The construction of the car park at the end of Hyde Park Road, yeah, that's gonna, there's, there's very little there at the moment, so you know, you could be, you could be looking at I'm not much on civil works, but I would have said it's again fifty, fifty thousand dollars for something like that. The external fence around ninety-four A now, depending on how it's constructed, whether it's just a like a typical farmer's five-string wire fence, you could probably get away with that for probably something around about the twenty thousand dollars, but if we go for a two metre high chain mesh fence, you're probably looking at around the forty thousand dollar mark. And the construct the gutter, depending on how it's done, whether it's done with concrete, because Hickock Street's an interesting area up there with gutters, basically there's little spoon drains that everybody's, stormwater flows out into and I think that's part of the problem, it then flows across the road from the spoon drains and into the reserve. So again, you know, if it's just another spoon drain that we put in, that gets put in, then, yeah, you know, you're probably only looking at ten or fifteen thousand, but if you do a, a proper concrete one, then I suppose the price will run into a bit more money than that.
All right, well, thanks, John. At least give us the ballpark of how much money is required to bring it up to the standard that the committee wants. So thank you.
No worries. It is a great asset, the, the reserve.
Oh, yes.
Blows my mind how many people use it, it really does.
Thanks councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Gibson, you had a question as well?
Yes, I did. Thanks, Mr Mayor. Although before I speak to John, can I just put a question through you please? Now, John was speaking about the bridge. Is it not our responsibility to do in the first place instead of the club?
Mr CEO, I'll put that one to you about the responsibility of the bridge.
So ultimately, the, there's a committee who assists us with that reserve, so it is council's responsibility overall. So your funding that comes forward, either comes through, as John touched on, through other government sources such as the LBA or, or ourselves. It's a project that we would, we would either need to fund or aim funding for.
Because, shoot.
Thank you.
I'll better check first.
Mr Mayor, yeah, got it. No worries. So so we'll take the, the bridge cost and actually doing that out of the, what I was going to ask you, John. Just a simple one, the rubbish truck, you're looking to have a turning circle and things for it and I have no problem with that, but where does it turn around now?
So I believe it either turns around in the gateway opposite our maintenance shed, because there's a gateway there, or it does go up to the end of Hickock Street where it meets the South Government Road and turns around there, but that area is not conducive for sure to a rubbish truck turn around there and, and probably even less so a school bus or something which is longer again than the rubbish truck.
No worries. Okay, thank you.
No worries.
Thanks councillor Gibson. Are there any other questions for John? No, there's no other questions for you, John. Thanks very much for your time to make your submission to the budget and, and putting the submission in in writing and, and then, then speaking to it. It's, it's great. Great to hear from you and the, and the committee and thank you for the great work you do.
The committee, thanks you very much for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Good on you. All right. Thank you.
So he's all out of.
See you. John's gone now from the meeting and we do have Andy and I see if we can get your audio to work, Andy.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Good.
But that, so Andy, for, by way of introduction, we've got Andy Webb with us. Andy's the treasurer and member of the Matheson Park Special Committee and, and speaking to his submission tonight on behalf of that committee as well. So it's great that your audio is working now, Andy, and thanks very much for your, for your patience and staying on the line.
No worries.
You got to see the process with, with what John went through. So we have three minutes to, to make your presentation. Councillors may have questions.
Yep, that's great.
All right. So when you're ready.
All right. Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak regarding our submission for funding towards upgrading the play space at Matheson Park. Matheson Park Committee recently had our management plan updated, which has included installation of a new play space, which we have been trying to have implemented for many years. For those of you that have been to Matheson Park or looked at our website, you can see that Matheson Park is a huge asset to the Latrobe community and has been underrated. There are a lot of Latrobe Valley residents who have only recently found out about the existence of Matheson Park, probably due to the fact that the park has been extensively worked on in the last fifteen years. We have installed a counter as a walking track and have averaged eight thousand people per month for the last three months walking around the lake. This does not include people visiting the playground, fishing and other visitors to the park that do not walk past our council. Discussions with the users of the park revealed that they have been overwhelmed by the facilities and setting. One lady told me that she wanted to have her ashes scattered there. We have over two thousand trees planted, many varieties, boardwalks and pathways around the lake and into Churchill, fishing platforms, picnic tables, barbecues, cupboard areas, wheelchair access toilet, cell shades and an old farmhouse with pictures of it in its early days. A wedding was actually held there last year. We recently installed a new walking track through iconic for collection of trees, which includes a rare ulamai pine. The only items not improved on is the play space, which is handy, but the committee and others believe is inadequate for the area and the amount of visitors to the park. We are concerned that Churchill has recently lost Hazel Pondage, which was highly rated as a place where visitors came to from the Latrobe area and beyond for recreation purposes. It should be noted that many residents from Yunara and Belara frequent Churchill for school, shopping and recreation purposes. That's, that's all I wanted to say at this stage.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks very much. So I'm sure the councillors have some questions for you. Might look to our South Ward councillor and councillor White, you've got a question, you have.
Yes, there I do. Andy, good evening, how are you?
How are you going councillor White?
Yeah, good thanks. So I do understand that you, you stand there every day and sort of, you're the one that's doing all the counting, no, I'm only joking. But seriously, there is a, you know, this is my, if I recall correctly, you can confirm this if you like, that that eight thousand, I think you said eight thousand people per month versus Lee Madison Park and that's based on, you know, a sort of a subtle counter that's situated within the park, is that right?
That's right, it's, it's part of the walking track. You actually, you can go around the lake or you can go into Churchill. But it's, it's sort of about a third of the way round, round the lake situated in a bollard.
Yeah. And my understanding is also, am I right in saying that the, the park run in Churchill, that is that used, Matheson Park is now very much sort of part of the landscape in regard to the park run, this, run every Saturday morning?
The park run actually wasn't run there. It was actually run in other parts of Churchill because they, they didn't actually want to cross any roads, I believe, mostly. But we do have, I think the Harriers often come from Trowgan and they, they have
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they, they do have practice runs around there and the school runs around there and obviously individuals run around there as well.
So as far as the playground equipment is concerned, the playground that you're particularly advocating for tonight, you, you see that, you know, how do you see that sort of an ideal world that, that, that'd be done as a stage project or how do you see that?
Well, I guess we would want it done as, as quickly as possible, but I think it would probably have to be done, done in stages. But there is in our methods, in our management plan, it includes a playground, I think it was Cat from, from the, from the council who actually worked on that. So we actually have a, a, an actual planned play space.
Anyway, just thank you Mr Mayor, I just particularly want to acknowledge the efforts and the work of the Matheson Park Committee to do a fantastic job for Churchill in particular, but for the Latrobe City more broadly and what, and what they're delivering out there for the community via their experiences, doing a fantastic job.
Right, thanks councillor White. Thanks for your comments and Andy for the answers to the question. Councillor Gibson, you had a question as well?
Yes, please. Thanks Andy, I've just got two quick questions for you please. One, how much is the cost and will it actually be an all abilities playground please?
Well, I think the cost that was worked out originally was about eight hundred thousand dollars. But I don't know whether that's changed or not, but that's, that's what I think Cat worked out at the time when she did the the playground and I definitely would like to, you know, to have it for, for disabled people as well. That, that, that would be really good because our toilet is, you know, for disabled. So I think it's important that we do include, you know, disabled people and we have the very small playground that we've got, I have noticed that we have groups that come down there and you know, with their, their disabled people and they might, might stay there for half an hour or an hour. You know, working there. So I think that's very important.
No worries. Thank you, Andy.
Thanks councillor Gibson. Councillor Middlemiss? Can you see and hears?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Hi Andy.
Hi Graham.
I seem to have seen you on a number of occasions. How long have you been seeking funding for this project?
Well, I, I think I've been treasurer for about four years. So probably three years and eleven months, I've probably been looking for funding.
Okay, and is it fair to start, I'm just reading my agenda on the side here, you're actually only seeking the three hundred thousand as the, as sort of first stage, is that correct?
That's right, yes.
Because I think a couple of years ago you were before us and you were looking for funding, you were trying to buy from some of the closed schools, some of the equipment?
That's right, yes, I, I just about had it in my hand, but someone, I went on holidays and someone stole it from underneath us, but I still had to get that past the council anyway.
Fair enough. Okay, so you, you, you've been after this money for four years and probably your predecessors some years before that?
Yeah, well, I was, I'm, I'm the first treasurer that they've had. So I, I, the, the members of all indicated their, you know, wanting to, to improve the, the play area there, so it has, has been fairly, you know, probably five, five or six years.
Yeah, I thought there was a bit of history involved. Thanks for that.
No worries.
Thank you. Any other councillors have any questions for Andy before letting go? I think Andy, I think that's, that's great. So thanks very much for your presentation and for your answers to councillors' questions tonight. And thank you very much for sticking through the audio and, and working all that, the virtual meeting of Zoom out as well.
That's quite an experience, I quite enjoyed it.
Experience for us too.
So, thanks, thanks for your time and for, for listening to us, I appreciate that.
We appreciate your time as well. Good on you. We'll send you out now.
Okay, thank you.
There goes Andy. So thanks councillors. We're next person on, a speaker on our agenda this evening is Graham O'Hara. In the waiting room I have Helen's iPhone, so I'm presuming that that is Graham. Written there is Helen's iPhone, so I think Graham might be on the end of this if I hit admit. There we are. We can hear you. Hello there, Helen. Hello Graham.
Hello.
Fantastic to hear the mayor. Good to see you. It's working. Thank you so much for waiting online. We'll, we'll let you get it right. We're in no rush at the moment, so we'll
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yeah, all the councillors.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead.
Yeah, sure. So, so the way it works Graham is we've got, we've got three minutes, I think you've done this before and, and then stick around and councillors might have some questions for you at the end of the three minutes. But on your own time, when you want to start, we'll be ready for your presentation.
Okay, well, I can start right away if, if you're happy with that. So this is our submission to Latrobe City for our farm, farm rate differential. Our committee members thank council for the opportunity to present this submission for the farm rate differential and we acknowledge council for their support in previous years. Our farm rate differential has been in place in excess of forty years. The Minister for Local Government is encouraging all regional councils to reduce the rate burden placed on farms by the use of this differential rate system valuation of land act nineteen sixty. The net annual value of farmland was legislated at five percent of the capital improved value of that said property. The net annual value purported to represent the return of the property in a rent or lease situation. The rate of return on farmland does not return this five percent figure. Farm rate payers pay significantly more than township rate payers and have less access to the services offered by council. Our committee members congratulate past councils for recognising the inequity that does exist. There's, it's a state government rate review and we understand it's still, there's no findings as yet, probably due to the COVID nineteen impact, but we have been informed many of the submissions put forward for that rate review made reference to the frequency of valuing, the impact of zone changes resulting in rating increases with no change in the farmer's use of the land. This has threatened the farm sustainability of some farms in, in our area actually. Moving on, farmland writing is, farming is a land based
Moving on, farmland writing is farming is a land-based activity. If the farm business improves its productivity via the land, the land value increases lifting its accessible rate value. Our association supports council to maximise the municipal charge up to the twenty percent of total rate revenue. We view this as an equal contribution by rate payers. Concerns from some of our members, the past three years farm valuations have plateaued and in some cases fallen in part due to the downturn in prices in the dairy industry, plus the continuing effects of the past two years of drought requiring farmers to buy in substantial amount of fodder, leading to greater levels of debt and in some cases destocking. The council's independent values don't seem to acknowledge this fact. Zoning changes, they require careful planning. Ratings should continue for farm, for farm zone one and two if it's been moved, moved to rural living and such, until such time as the owner submits a plan of subdivision within its rezoned category. The valuers are able to reintroduce the potential rate, thus rendering the farm property unviable due to the increased rate burden. In conclusion, the farm rate differential is a tool provided by the local government act to assist in the setting an equitable rate. Farm businesses are logistically low users of council services, but they contribute substantially to both Latrobe City's economy and rate revenue. Agricultural production within Latrobe City is a large contributor for the growing Gippsland food bowl. We've been in the grip of a two-year drought, which has necessitated farmers to buy in fodder at extremely high prices to maintain their, their breeding numbers. Thank goodness, we've now received good rainfall in the past six months and been able to replenish our stocks of fodder. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thanks very much Graham. I noticed just as the, the clock went at three, three minutes, a couple of councillors wanted to give you an extension and you said in conclusion. So I'll just let you, let you go through, so.
Thank, thank you.
Some good timing there, so thank you, thank you very much for that. Councillors, do we have any questions of Graham? Councillor White, councillor Middlemiss.
No questions.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Graham, thank you for your attendance and presentation, you know, under the challenging circumstances and you managed really well. And, but talking about the, the valuers don't seem to acknowledge the, the, the fact that, about, you know, the, the evaluations of properties through the annual, annual valuation. Did you want to say anything more about that in regard to what, what options there might be? Or, you know, or was the local branch for the association just considered sort of having some kind of communication with the valuer in that regard?
Well, yeah, thanks councillor White. We have been frustrated in the past. The valuers don't, they don't seem to, to come to terms when, when there's a, when there's a, a climatic downturn, properties are very hard to sell. And in some cases, their, their value, if, if the, if the property is to be sold, the, the price drops. Otherwise it stays unsold and stays on the market. We, we get frustrated with that from time to time. The values, if we have a valuers conference from time to time, that does happen. I've not been aware of anybody coming away satisfied with their acknowledgement. Is that, is that satisfying, councillor White?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Middlemiss had a question for you as well.
Thank you. I'm not hearing anything.
Oh, sorry, he's, he's coming.
Hearing anything Graham was, I couldn't turn the microphone on. Uh, look, my question, I need to, to, to answer it because councillor White asked virtually the same question. The only thing is, I might get the CEO just to point out the changes. It's no longer council, council's independent valuer, the government's taken that over. So perhaps Steve, if you could just explain that to Graham. But your, your answer to councillor White's question was virtually the answer I was looking for, thanks.
Thank you, thank you councillor Middlemiss.
Yes, the, the valuer general has now taken on responsibility for all valuations across the state. We of course pay for that privilege each year, so there's actually now an annual valuation process, used to be every two years.
Yes.
Valuer, and the valuer is required to undertake an assessment of a certain number of properties each year and adjust the valuations accordingly. But as you know, and you already touched on it, it's based on obviously moving to the market and sales of properties. So in terms of how valuations are undertaken, they are, they are undertaken as councillor Middlemiss indicated by the state and provided to us.
Yes, okay. Um, yeah, annually it's more frequent, more cost, I guess. In the past, I think there were three years and they moved to two years. All adds to the cost and they don't always satisfy our questions because a number of our, of our members have had conferences with valuers and I can't recall any of, any one of those coming away with satisfaction, satisfaction.
Well, thanks Graham. Any other councillors got a question for, for Graham while we're still getting him on the line? I think, I think you're off the hook. Thanks very much Graham and thank you and on behalf of the Latrobe City Farm Rate Pays Association for your presentation and for your answers tonight to, to budget submissions.
Okay, thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you to all councillors.
Good on you and thanks for your patience.
Okay, good evening, thank you.
Thanks Graham. So we've moved to our final speaker this evening to, to our draft twenty twenty-one budget and that is Catherine Copsie. And I'll just hit join or admit on the, on the Zoom. Here comes Catherine.
Hi.
Good day Catherine. Your camera works and your audio works, that's fantastic.
Two for two.
Two for two, well done. I think, thank you for your patience, it has taken a bit of time, we've probably been sitting there for fifty odd minutes, but you're our last speaker this evening, so the councillors are all here and they can see you and hear you. We've, you've got three minutes to, to present to your submission and then stay on the line for any questions that councillors might have in regards to that.
Excellent, thank you very much. Thanks very much for facilitating this this evening in unusual circumstances councillors. I will just give a quick overview of the Alliance for Gambling Reform and our budget request, but really just wanted to make ourselves available this evening to answer any questions that councillors may have. So my name is Catherine Copsie, I work as the council gambling harm advisor with the Alliance for Gambling Reform. We're Australia's only national advocacy and organisation seeking to reduce harm from gambling through a public health lens. We are a registered health promotion charity and we have requested that Latrobe join as a member of the leadership council group now fifteen, sorry, twenty-three councils strong and the request is for fifteen thousand dollars for annual membership to be part of that leadership council group. Broadly speaking, we seek these partnerships with our councils because we see that councils are on the front lines in dealing with the ramifications of gambling harm and we know that we can have a stronger voice when we're advocating together. And in my role, I also work with the councils on local issues of importance, whether that's seeking to review policy, running community awareness, raising campaigns and so on. So that's a bit case by case, but we also do that coordinated advocacy to seek to reduce harm from gambling in local communities. Just touching quickly on the losses stats from Pokies alone for Latrobe, it's pretty shocking. Over forty-six million dollars was lost on Pokies in the Latrobe community last year. And that equates to an average of over a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars per day. So puts in context, not only the budget request, but also I suppose in what's a really difficult, I acknowledge a really difficult year for councils informing budgets, just the extreme financial impact that gambling harm is already having and that's from Pokies alone on people in Latrobe and we know that that is linked to many other serious issues that councillors no doubt seeking to tackle like homelessness, family violence and mental health issues as well. I wanted to just briefly cover off on a couple of great programs as well as our advocacy around reducing harm from Pokies. We're very proud that this year, despite the circumstances, we have launched a campaign for the first time to end gambling ads and harm from online gambling. So looking at reducing the exposure, particularly of young kids who we know are susceptible to the normalisation of gambling harm. We know that actually all of us are, particularly when gambling ads form part of sport and sporting culture. But we know that kids are really poorly affected by that as well. So a campaign that we, has been a long time in the making and we are proud to launch this year. And we also have a fantastic program called Champions for Change, which is really seeking to elevate the voices of people with lived experience of gambling harm and bring them to the front as well. That helps combat stigma that can prevent people from seeking help. And it also just means that people are able to share their experiences and not wear that burden individually and helps to contribute to treating gambling harm as the public health problem that it is. So in short, we would really love to have council support and dearly love to work closely with you to continue to advance coordinated advocacy that's going to be effective in reducing harm from gambling and also work closely with you on local issues. And I'm happy to take any questions if councillors should have them.
Thanks so much Catherine. Councillors, do we have any questions of Catherine? Councillor Gibson has a question.
Thank you Catherine. I've got a couple of questions please. Okay, now I, I missed the per day amounts that you said. So that one, the Latrobe area, how, what area does that actually take in? Is that our Latrobe City Council area or is that further afield? And lastly, okay, with the lockdown, how has that improved the, the situation? Thank you.
Sure. It, so in Victoria, one benefit that we do have is relatively good reporting on Pokies losses. So that figure of, the exact figure, the exact average figure is one hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars per day lost in the Latrobe Rural City area, LGA. And in terms of the exact figure for, so obviously venues have been locked down as well. And we know that there has been an unexpected, you know, benefit of that lockdown is that some people who have really struggled to avoid expenditure and Pokies have actually, for the first time in many, many years, had a break working with our lived experience advocates. We did hear stories around, you know, it's, it's hard almost to think how long we've been in this state thanks to COVID. But one story that we heard was that a mother was able for the first time to buy Easter eggs for her kids rather than that money going into the Pokies. I don't have to hand your stats, but I'm very happy to follow up in an email to the mayor that can be circulated and I'll do the calculation for how much you might expect has been saved during that lockdown period for Latrobe Rural City Council area.
That would be great.
Happy to. And there'll be new data emerging soon, so obviously we'll see the actual picture, but you can get an estimation by looking at that average figure.
That would be really great. Do you know, one more question please. The, the different ones who would normally be there and lose quite a lot of money. Are they, during this time, are they actually taking the time to go and seek help for their gambling problem? Do you know that or not, please?
Um, there has, I, I understand from what I hear through the RGF reporting, we are hearing that some people, and certainly anecdotally, I, I know from some of the Champions for Change that people have actually been prioritising other things in their life and health in their life. I don't have an overall figure, I'm, I'm not sure whether we'd get access to that sort of thing because it's obviously private when people contact support services, but certainly I've heard anecdotal stories that for some people this has been a real break. The flip side of that unfortunately is that we know that when people are vulnerable, that can be actually triggering. We, we know that there's not been, from, from the figures that we can see, there hasn't been a total switch to online gambling or anything like that. So some people who would be frequenting venues where they open are just not. And there hasn't been a total shift to online gambling expenditure and so on. We won't know all of that until after statistics come out, but from what we're seeing reported with daily figures, it's not, not all that expenditure is going online and certainly I've heard some people having this as a break.
No worries, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Gibson, are there any other questions councillors of Catherine? No? Thanks very much Catherine for your, for your submission for a start and for speaking to that submission this evening. And thank you very much for staying on the line for, while we had our public presentations from submitters. So very much appreciated and have a great night.
Thank you very much and all the best for deliberations councillors.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Very much. Um, so Catherine has left the meeting and it's just us now councillors. So that ends our item five, which is public participation time. We move to item six and the only thing that we have in item six is the agenda item that says, item six point one is the proposed resolution is that council receives notes and considers all submissions received in relation to the draft two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget. And this should read that it's the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one budget prior to the adoption of the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one budget for the ordinary council meeting held in October, in March, Monday, the third of August twenty twenty. That doesn't have a quick typo in it, that's the one that, the typo did go out publicly over the weekend, but is correct on our screen at the moment. Councillor's happy just to amend that, that typo. Okay, thank you. As discussed, thank you, so raise, raise the hands there, just that we can minute that we've, we've had a little typo and we fixed that up on the screen. Do I have a move of this proposed resolution? Councillor Gibson? Councillor, and do I have a second? Councillor McFarlane, I saw your hand, yep. Councillor McFarlane seconding. Do I have any opposition? No opposition. Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak? No? Councillor McFarlane, did you wish to speak? No, no speakers. As we've had no, no speakers and no opposition, we'll pass this unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to make sure I've got that right councillor Gibson, you didn't wish to speak. You were shaking your head, I just couldn't hear you, but I could see you shaking your head, but I just wanted to make that clear. As we've had, that's the only item on the agenda this evening, it's six point one, to receive that. That is the close of our business this evening councillors, so we thank you very much. We thank all our submitters and we thank the people who came to present to us via Zoom this evening. Thank you very much for working through the technology and for the people who may have joined us via YouTube to watch this presentation because we can't have it in person, we thank them for sticking through the meeting as well. So bid you good evening and thank you very much.